And I'm Jan Suley. And we will introduce, you can also see Wendy Brukwinstein. We're with Silicon Valley Association of Republican Women. And then we'll introduce our two speakers for tonight. This session on critical race theory is the second of two parts. We did the first one October 7th. This is the second part, we are recording them all. And well, if you've missed it, or you want to listen to again, it'll be there. Now I would like to introduce Elina from Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. And also Leah Renzen, and they will tell us a little bit about themselves. And we'll start, they have so much to cover. So ladies, take it away.
All right, thank you so much to Jan and to Wendy for organizing this really important conversation. And okay. As Jan mentioned, I am Elina Kaplan, I'm the co-founder of ACES, which is short for Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies. I'll tell you a couple of words, just a couple of words about me, because we have so much to cover. My background is in executive management of various nonprofits. I found out about ethnic studies in California in around June of 2019. Was completely horrified by what I was reading in those initial drafts. It sounded quite familiar to what I had grown up with. I grew up in the former Soviet Union, immigrated as a preteen, but just in time to get some of the indoctrination that was there. And then I got sucked in because it just seemed too important. And yeah, it was just too horrifying to imagine some of these curricula ending up in the schools. And I've been doing this full-time ever since. And we organized ACES about a year ago formally. And we focus on removing ideological agendas from ethnic studies. And to basically enable curricula that build bridges, that fight racism, that highlight the contributions of ethnic groups. In other words, we support ethnic studies and we support the kind of ethnic studies that vast majority of Californians and Americans would assume would be in schools. And if you were here, I think most of you were in part one of the session. This part probably sounds familiar. I wanted to just emphasize, because this was one of the things that we'll be talking about in terms of how to message, how to position your opinion and your views around CRT in schools and ethnic studies. Um, okay, so the format of tonight's webinar is as follows. We'll spend about the first part focused, about 20 minutes or so of the first part focused on the tips for talking about ethnic studies and CRT in schools. Hopefully that will be particularly useful to those of you that are interested in running for board seats and also for school board seats. And also really for anyone who's engaged in these conversations, whether it be with your friends, your colleagues, your family, or anyone else. Then we'll pause for Q and A. And then we'll switch gears and focus on what you can do as parents, grandparents, taxpayers, voters, just regular people. And we'll go through some examples and show you how you can use the toolkit that we have recently released. And for those of you again that were here in part one, you got the link to the toolkit, we'll send it to you again so that you have it. If you were not with us in part one and haven't already seen the recording, I would encourage you to do so because we're going to dive right in. And where we went through the overview of ethnic studies CRT issues in that part. So I think that you'll still be able to follow with us, but if you haven't already seen it, I would encourage you to go to the website, as Jan said, and get the recording or email Jan or Wendy and get the recording from them. One of my favorite quotes is by Justice Louis Brandeis, who said that sunlight is said to be the best disinfectant. And much of what we are doing, we as ACES and much of what I'm asking you to do as engaged parents, grandparents, voters, and potential board members is to use that sunlight, use shine a light on the issues that we're going to be talking about. Because I truly believe that it is because so much of it is going under the radar that things have gotten as far as they have. So there are key strategies that I think of when I think about the work that we're doing. The two, they're fallen to two buckets, expose, meaning shine a light on the issues, and mobilize, share the light. And we're going to be talking about both today. So remember today, we're talking about how do you talk about ethnic studies with others? And when we think about that, I would say that you start with the idea that there are different types of ethnic studies. It turns out that there's no agreement, as we talked about in the last session, of what ethnic studies is. There's no definition of it per se. And there are two major types of ethnic studies. We talked about the critical liberated ethnic studies, and that's the one that has the CRT base and has the neo Marxist ideology at interweave, the interwoven throughout it. And there's constructive ethnic studies. The problem is not ethnic studies, it's the type of ethnic studies. And what you want to get away from is doing a shortcut and arguing against ethnic studies as a whole. Because as I'm sure most of you would agree, ethnic studies can be a good and positive thing. Now, whether or not it should be a standalone class, we can argue about that, but it's not a particularly productive discussion. And the fact is that, again, it's a type though, is that can be problematic, not ethnic studies in and of itself. So you want to cover two things, big picture. Why is critical liberated CRT based? Just a reminder that those are all interchangeable, so we'll use those interchangeably, critical liberated CRT based ethnic studies. Why it's harmful, but don't forget to talk about why constructive ethnic studies is positive. And that the, these curricula are out there, as you'll see on our website. And they do produce positive results. And there is absolutely no reason that one must turn to the harmful type of curriculum, the harmful type of ethnic studies to get the results that these folks are looking for, which include talking about racism, teaching history, and so on. So here are a few recommended don'ts. These are not things that we go around, obviously, talking about to everybody, but I think these are important for you to know. As I mentioned, I would not argue that there should not be a separate ethnic studies class. We can have an entire session on that. We could have an entire session on the educational benefits of a separate class versus weaving in what ethnic study should be into other classes, including history, literature, and so on. We can talk about whether or not there's not focus on ethnic studies currently. None of those arguments would be particularly productive because there is, we are in a situation now where there is an acceptance of the idea that ethnic studies as a class is something that should be offered in schools. In fact, as you probably know, we passed a bill called AB 101 that is now law that requires ethnic studies to be offered, not only offered, but to be taken as a graduation requirement by public school students and charter school students. So when I say there's no point in arguing about this, these are facts on the ground. Um, and by the way, we at ACES happen to actually believe in the idea that ethnic studies can be a positive thing. I also wouldn't call out the ethnic studies model curriculum, the ESMC per se. And for those of you that are familiar with this curriculum, there are absolutely issues that still remain in it. The fundamental, it's come a very long way, no question about it. There have been tons and tons of improvements, however, the fundamental framework, the fundamental guiding principles are still definitely CRT based. And there's even an instruction to teachers to incorporate CRT pedagogy into the classroom. All that said, the ESMC has been passed, it's been approved in March of this year. And similar as talking about ethnic studies class, you're not going to get very far. You can talk about and should talk about the problematic aspects that are in critical liberated slash liberated curriculum, which may also be in the ESMC, but there's no reason to be focusing on the ESMC per se. You should really be talking about the curricula that are out there that, as we discussed, are being penned or are being propagated by various organizations, particularly the liberal liberated ethnic studies curriculum coalition. I also suggest against arguing about the following, debating about the following terms, systemic, structural, institutional, pick one of those. Racism oppression, so systemic racism, structural oppression, institutional racism, all those combinations. And the reason is that it takes you down a path that again, is not particularly productive. Those terms have taken on lives of their own in our society. We could spend a lot of time, and I'm sure many of you have, I know I certainly have, debating these particular concepts, whether or not they should be named this, whether or not these are the correct semantics, and whether or not there's benefit, more benefit or harm to using these terms. However, like ethnic studies, I am going to go out on a limb and say that these terms are here to stay. And you're not going to get very far if you're trying to have conversations around education by having debates around them. And the last thing I'll say is I don't recommend combining the issue of ethnic studies, or for that matter CRT based education, with other issues, whether it be masking, vaccines, gender issues, sex education, any of those. And that's just a best practice in any topic, right? If you have something to say about a particular topic, you are much better off focusing on that topic and discussing what your views are on the specific issue. When you bring in the others, it becomes a mishmash and becomes, and is easier to dismiss as a general perspective, as opposed to dealing with the specific issues at hand. Okay, let's turn to critical race theory. So as you all know, this has been in the news ad nauseam. We at ACES have gone back and forth about the extent to which we want to refer to CRT, critical race theory. The reason is that, as you all know, the term has become politicized. And between the media and the talking heads, we've now turned CRT into this political football. And in many ways, it's lost all meaning for people, people just have a trigger reaction to it. In addition, there are conflicting reports that we're getting, and this is super frustrating for all of us that are involved in this space. We get, on the one hand, we get teachers, principals, superintendents, and even the second largest, I'm going to say, the second largest teachers' union in the country, the American Federation of Teachers, AFT. Randy Weingartner is, Weingarten is with that organization, coming on and saying, we don't teach CRT, there is no CRT in K through 12, doesn't happen. And then it turns out that a couple of weeks before that, NEA, the National Educator Association, says, not only says that CRT is important, but also allocates a whole bunch of funding specifically to weaving CRT into curriculum. So and goes on record as saying that and passes resolutions and so on. So crazy things are happening, we get it, it's very frustrating. If you stay away from CRT in general, it tends to be more effective. And the reality is that the main concern is not CRT in general. And when I talk about that, I'm talking about main concern for us when we talk about schools. CRT is a legal theory, as many of you know, it's been taught for decades in law schools. And it's taught there among many other theories, including other race theories, by the way. The issue is pushing this very particular ideological theory into K through 12 schools and making it the lens, the sole lens through which subjects are taught. So when you talk about it that way, when you think about it that way, it makes the issue more specific. And it gets away from, not completely, but it gets away a little bit from just the generic CRT bad, CRT good. A few more thoughts on that. I think it is absolutely important, so this is the exception to what I was saying in general. It is absolutely important to say when you hear this, it's when you hear otherwise, that CRT is not talking about racism. And CRT is not teaching history honestly, that is absolutely not what CRT is. And if it's helpful, you can look through our talking points in the toolkit that actually give you a couple of quotes. If you, if you need to have that conversation with somebody or a group of somebodies about whether or not you are against talking about racism or talking about teaching history honestly. Both of the above are of course important, talking about racism and teaching history honestly, and are done with constructive ethnic studies. And guess what, it turns out that these things can be done without dividing students into oppressor and victim boxes, without imposing a specific ideological agenda, without glorifying militant neo Marxist leaders over peaceful leaders, such as civil rights movement leaders like Martin Luther King. It is helpful that you can bring the conversation back to the guiding principles and examples of critical liberated ethnic studies versus constructive ethnic studies, and all of those tools are available on our website that we'll go through. So as much as you can bring back the conversation from the generic, oh, you just don't want to teach history, the better off, I think that the clearer and better off you'll be. I wanted to say a few words about AB 101, since it is now, it has now passed the ethnic studies requirement. So here you've got, oh, sorry, I thought that I may be able to highlight it for you, but I can't. So the first part, the G1, that is the actual bill. So that's a language, in case you're wondering, what, what does it look like? That G1 part is a modification of the education code, specifically section 220. And that's a language that gets entered or has gotten entered into the education code as part of passing the bill. And it basically says that students are required to take ethnics, to pass an ethnic studies course in order to graduate. There are several amendments that were made to this bill after it was proposed. And two that are particularly important to keep in mind, that are helpful tools for all of us are the following. The first one is that the intent is not to use the portions of the draft model curriculum, so the draft ESMC that were not adopted. So these are parts that were specifically rejected as part of draft one. And as you remember from our conversation last time, the folks that created, that developed draft on went, took their toys and went home. And they created a new curriculum called liberated ethnic studies, as we have the ethnic studies curriculum coalition. And they now have a curriculum that is based on that initial draft. So this is basically saying, no, no, you're not supposed to be using portions that were rejected from the initial draft. Now, is this full proof? Absolutely not. Is this something that's going to stand up in court? Nope, probably not. However, it is a tool that can help in advocacy. And it's helpful for all of us to be aware of when we talk to schools about the various curriculum they want to adopt. I should actually modify when I said that it wouldn't stand up in court, it could, it could. But that's not why it's there, and it's really there as something that we can use as yet another tool in the toolbox. The second one that I think is particularly impactful talks about the fact that the public has, needs to have the opportunity both to be presented with a proposal around ethnic studies about the ethnic studies curriculum and to express its views on the proposed course. So there are two meetings that it's mandating. And that's important to know, because in many cases, they are not happening. So it's important for all of us to be aware that these are specifically spelled out in this bill and that they were added specifically to the bill because they're important. Okay. Let's go to, um, here, I'll just walk you through a couple of things that are in the toolkit, just so you're familiar with them. For those of you that haven't had a chance to look at it. And then we'll go to, Leah will tell you more about how to use it, go through some examples. So the parts that I think will be particularly helpful for anybody who's thinking about running for school board, which I strongly encourage you to do, have to keep sneaking that in, are the talking points, where you can look at different topics and you can go through. We actually also have a version of talking points with sample scripts, and that's really more for organizing volunteers to come speak at board, at various board meetings. However, it might be helpful to you as well, because it gives a little bit more nuance to what these talking points are. But the other piece is going to be helpful as well, particularly not necessarily with your board member candidate hat on, but just a voter hat on. The steps to getting started, what can you, actual steps that you can take for getting involved with this issue. Depending on what you're looking for, whether you're really looking to get to go headfirst in and lead a group, or if you just want to be a volunteer and do this once in a while, it kind of goes through what the different options are. How to prepare for a school board meeting, specifically how to organize volunteers. And then there's a whole bunch more materials, one that I would call your attention to, and we'll take a look at this one, is the contrast at a glance. I think that's a particularly useful tool to show people, here's what liberated or critical curricula are, and here's what constructive are. How to tell if it's liberated, we get that question all the time, well, how do I know if what my school district is using? So keywords that you can look for, ways that you can tell. And a few other things that we'll go through when we get to Leah's portion. Then there are also some legal resources, both about federal rights and education codes that people can use to, and I do encourage you to become familiar with the education codes. They work for some people in terms of advocacy, not for others. I think there are people that feel more grounded if they can refer to particular legal codes. It's not because you're necessarily going around suing districts or schools, but it is useful to know what the codes are. There are also, we list organizations that can help with litigation, if that is a way that you choose to go. Okay, so I'm going to pause here and let's take some questions. So let me stop sharing. And let's take some questions. It is 7:35, so we'll go for, let's go for about 10 minutes or so before we change gears. Leah, do you mind reading, and reminder, you put your questions into the chat. And Leah will take a look and read them out to me.
So one question that just came up is, is there a specific requirement to have any specific ethnicity required in an ethnic studies course?
I assume that means to teach an ethnic studies course?
So if you have an ethnic studies course and it revolves around various ethnicities, is there a requirement that it has? Does it have to have the core four, or can it vary by district or?
Yeah, so there's no specific requirement per se, however, there are guidelines. So for instance, in what Leah just referred to, the core four refers to four groups that are considered foundational groups. This is from the academic environment, from university environment, which does use critical ethnic studies. And those groups are Black Americans, Asian Americans, Native Americans, and Latino Americans. Okay, so in general, an ethnic studies class will include those groups. It can also include additional groups. The ESMC, the model curriculum, is divided up by those groups. And then also has an additional section with a few others, including Armenians, Sikhs, Jewish Americans, Arab Americans as well. So it formally speaking, no, it doesn't have to. However, there's an accepted concept, an accepted principle that it would include at least those four groups that I need. The idea is supposed to be that the ethnic studies curricula reflect the community that they're in. In fact, that's part of the language in AB 2016, which is the bill that established us in studies model curriculum. So schools have a fair bit of leeway, but most of that leeway will tend to be in adding, not subtracting.
We have a request for you to put up the AB 101 amendments screen.
Sure.
As an alternative, if somebody wants, we could probably copy and paste it into the chat too.
So here, let me share a screen for a moment. I don't know if that means somebody just wants to be looking at it. Leah, can people see it?
Yeah.
So hold on. There we go.
And then there's another question, which I'll be honest, I don't totally understand. So I'm hoping maybe he'll pipe up and, and speak up. But why is ethnic studies not quote ethnic studies? And I think that might be about, you know, language and nuances and those kinds of things, but I'm not entirely sure, I have to be honest.
Well, why don't we let, um, good idea to, for that person to pipe up and just tell us what he or she meant by that question. And while they're unmuting themselves, so I'll stop sharing the screen. But just so you know, the PowerPoint slides will be available to you. Wendy and Jan will get those to you. And you'll be able to see both this, and you can also go to leginfo, L E G I N F O, which has all the bills in search on AB 101, if you forget to look at the PowerPoint. Okay, we had, does somebody want to identify themselves that had that question so that Leah and I can get a little bit more color to it? Because I also don't necessarily know what that means. Let's see, I see one that says, how do we access ethnic studies positive curriculum that was rejected by the state? Okay, so just to clarify, it's not that an entire curriculum was rejected by the state. There are constructive positive ethnic studies curriculum out there. So for example, the Los Angeles Unified School District's curriculum, LAUSD, which is the largest school district in California and the second largest in the US, has a curriculum that is actually quite reasonable. That is not the curriculum that shows to go with. It is not that they rejected it, it's that when the group, and there's a whole history to this, the group that was chosen, that was nominated through a series of steps, some of which had been identified as missteps by the Department of Education, who has acknowledged that activists should not be determining curricula. Nevertheless, and they said that they put measures in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again. Nevertheless, in this case, we did have a group of activists that were chosen, that were nominated and then approved to create this initial draft of ethnic studies. They started from scratch, they started from a critical lens, a CRT based lens. And then it took off from there. And then we had to step back and kind of pull pieces of it out. Originally Governor Newsom said that this draft will never see the light of day. We didn't change quite as much as we had hoped. We had hoped that the guiding principles themselves would change, that the framework would change, it didn't. But there were, as I said, a lot of changes made to it. Now, that said, there's still a question about how do you access positive curricula? And if you go to our website on the about page, there is an example of one. There's an organization called Fair Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism that is in the process of developing a curriculum. As I mentioned, the LEUSD example is a good one, and there's actually another group, another school district, the Paso Robles School District, that also has a positive curriculum, we're still in the process of assessing it, but it seems to have a positive one. So there are a number of them. And they, you can also look at the talking points, I believe it's in the talking points, some, or it may be another document toolkit. You can, maybe we'll go through it as we're going through, that will show a contrast in different guiding principles. And it's a really stark contrast that helps to look, to look at one and then look at another side by side to understand how the different curriculums. and then look at another side by side to understand how the different curricula are different. So you can, you can absolutely access these and access information about them.
So Alina, there's a question about whether or not any school districts have adopted ethnic studies curriculum since the ESMC has been amended. And then I think if follow on to that would be, how, how would people access those curricula?
Okay, the second part, I think I'm gonna leave to you, Leah, for when you go through your examples. Because that's part of what people need to do and what the, and reaching out to different districts and so on. The first part, the answer is yes, absolutely. School districts have adopted, not only that, but some school districts adopted the ESMC, the model curriculum even before it was approved by the State Board of Education. They adopted it because this group of people that were pushing for the CRT-based curriculum went around district by district and reached almost 20 districts, convincing them to pass resolutions saying that they support their form of ethnic studies. Now, as it turns out, a number of those districts, and I would venture say majority of them, didn't really know what they were passing. And in reality, and this is a perfect example of the importance of having thoughtful and responsible board members on boards. As it turns out, they mostly thought that they were simply adopting a resolution supporting ethnic studies. Instead, what they were adopting was a commitment to adopt this critical slash liberated ethnic studies curriculum. So the short answer is yes. The long answer is there are schools that have been adopting it right and left all along. We expect that there will be a lot more than now that this bill has passed. But regardless of the bill itself, this is something that's happening throughout California and throughout the US, in fact, in other states as well, not only in high school. So the bill specifically refers to high school or in terms of graduation requirement, but in fact, K through H schools as well are passing, are passing policies to teach ethnic studies.
Um, I want to add also that there are districts who are currently creating ethnic studies curriculum. There are some who have already implemented. So Salinas has an ethnic studies curriculum that was out long before the ESMC, and they actually pulled some information from there to include it that is based on critical theory and CRT. San Francisco has also an ethnic studies curriculum. We don't really know, we, we, we're having a hard time getting that actual thing. But from what we can tell from various different sources, they're also based on CRT, maybe not quite as blatantly as Salinas. Then you've got Paso Robles, who is, has primarily a really constructive curriculum. LAUSD has a constructive curriculum. Those were all, all of those things were in place before the ESMC was even talked about. And then since then, districts have been creating, and San Mateo. So since the SMC started and was adopted, the San Mateo County has moved forward and their schools now have different ethnic studies curriculum. So it varies dramatically by school district, which is why it's really important to have school board members who are educated in what's going on, what the differences are, so they don't pass the buck off to the schools, which a lot of school districts do. Or if they do do that, that they make sure that they are in control of what's going on at those schools. So there's, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot going on. There's a question here about why, basically why?
Leah, before you go on, sorry, you mentioned Salinas. So just for fun, since we are all friends here, I thought I would share with folks a part of this, of a Salinas School District lesson. Can you guys see something called addendum C?
Yep, it's up.
So there is a poem called Malcolm Garvey Huey by Dead Prez. And the lyrics are, I study Malcolm Garvey Huey, Malcolm Garvey Huey, monster Cody with the Uzi, listening to fella cudi. I'm a goon with a machete, especially if it's deadly. Bang, bang, pig shooting, unless you're banging on the system, you're a gangster wearing panties. Police cannot stand me, cannot stand me packing y'all like a manny. Call me little Bobby Hutton because I'm first to push the button. Rappers don't be saying nothing to the system, we say F them. And the word is spelled out. So this is, this is not proposed, this is approved, this is in the school right now. For those of you that are not familiar, there's some, these are some interesting characters that we're listing here, but these are basically all pretty violent characters that are being listed in this lovely poem. Let me stop sharing and go back to the question that Leah was gonna ask.
So there's a, I think it's a basic fundamental question about why does ethnic studies primarily focus on the core four? Why, you know, why isn't, don't they share enough history in terms of oppression and racism and all of the things that ethnic studies covers to be discussed in a one generic course without having to separate them out and focus on them individually?
Yeah, it's a very reasonable question. And the answer is very simply that it just has to do with the background of the subject and the fact that it is born in academia at the university level. And the critical ethnic studies, almost all ethnic studies at university level has been critical ethnic studies. And part of critical ethnic studies in academia has been to divide the world into these four, what they call foundational groups, and white people. They took that and mapped it onto the, um, teaching it in K through twelve. So I'm not gonna venture, why they divided it up that way in academia, I think is beyond the scope of what we can cover today. But it has exclusively, it has exclusively to do with how it was set up in, at the university level. I think we should pause now because it's seven forty-seven AC, and I want to make sure we get to all the important information that Leah has. So I'm gonna switch things over to Leah, who is basically our queen of district outreach, local district outreach, and also the originator of the Aces Toolkit. And she will walk you through some examples and how to use the toolkit. And then we'll aim to get through a whole bunch more questions at the end. And again, just a reminder, if we don't get to you, please don't forget to email us. I'm gonna put our email again. But we will still get to some of the questions that are there right now. So Leah, over to you.
Okay, thank you. So I am gonna share with you our toolkit. We created the toolkit primarily so that parents and citizens in local districts had a way to understand what the issues were, how to go about getting information, how to interact with board members and school administrators, and then how to affect change essentially. And so that's what we have. So if you go to our main page, which is calethstudies.org, if you go under Resources, there's our Volunteer Toolkit. And if you click on that, Alina has shown you three slides earlier, the Guide to Action, the Tips and Resources, and Know Your Rights. I'm gonna primarily go through the Guide to Action. However, I want to just say that the Tips and Resources part has a boatload of information in terms of how to really understanding the, the difference between critical and or liberated and constructive, kind of key words is how to tell if it's liberated or critical. It has some key words and information in there. You know, meeting with boards or administrators, what it is that you're, you really want to do. And then sample, we have some samples there also for you to be able to use. If, you know, if you decide that you want to go and write a letter or be active on some way. What we find primarily when we talk to parents and community members are two basic scenarios. And so we really tried to build a toolkit focused on those two things. The first scenario is more general. It's the school district is creating, or the school is creating an ethnic studies curriculum. Parents have heard about it and they're concerned, but don't really know what to do. They're concerned about some of the issues that they've heard about and they want to get involved. Or even the school is looking at doing a specific initiative or program. And what can they do to make sure that it is a constructive curriculum? So the very first thing that you, that we suggest that you do is, aside from going to overview of issues, which actually just takes you to one of our web pages, is this Steps for Getting Started. And this document, which I'm gonna pull up right here, is just a document that really kind of lays out some of the, the key ways that you need to structure getting involved. And the very first thing we always say is to build a relationship with your principal, your superintendent, or your board members and/or really as many as you can. That is, I think, probably the number one thing you can do. You, we suggest that you go into, you set up meetings and you say, I've heard about ethnic studies. I know that AB one oh one passed. I know that I saw at the school board meeting that the school district is gonna start doing something, and I would like to just get some information from you. What's the timeline? Have you looked at different curriculum? Have you heard about critical and liberated? And have you heard about constructive? Just really under, get under, get some understanding in, ask questions, and, and explain to them that you want to be a partner, right? That you are not there to, to yell or scream or do any of the things that we see sometimes on, on the screen that might possibly make the FBI come after you. But the intent is that you want to be a partner. And so, and the reason for this is two things. The first is it allows you to learn who's on your side and who's not. It's really important that you find people that are going to be sympathetic with your views so that even if they can't necessarily do something on the school board. And so though, for any of you who are running, you might be up against a wall. There might, you know, there are restrictions about things you can and cannot do. But what I have found is that people who are sympathetic to what it is that we're saying and believe what we're, what we have to say will feed me information. And that is incredibly useful on so many different levels. The other part of that is that you build those relationships and people will then hear what you have to say when you want to say something that is possibly controversial to, you know, something, a position that the board has taken. They'll be more inclined to listen because you've already built that, you know, that relationship with them. So that's what part of all this stuff is. You go down farther, there are questions, we, you know, we go into pretty detail about the kinds of questions you want to ask, the different ways that you can, you can do things. We talk about the FOIA, although the reality is that FOIA is, FOIA is more for federal. California has a, the Records Act, the, I totally forgot, I'm totally blanking on the name of it. But it is, they have a Records Act where you can go and ask for public records. So that's all in the steps to getting started. Once you've kind of read over that, you kind of have your game plan for how it is you're gonna get started. You want to go and you want to meet with school board members. And so under Tips and Resources is our document called Meeting with School Board Members and Administrators. And here we go. And this is really just our tips for the kinds of things that you want to say to them, how you can get them on your side. One of the things that I was told very early on by Joe Semidion was that school officials, administrators, are the most defensive group of people you will ever meet in your life. They are automatically on, on the defensive the minute you call to say that you want a meeting. So it's really, really important that you go into this in, in a way that puts them at ease and lets them know that you, your goal is to work with them. So you've met with your school board, or you've met with your superintendent, or your head of curriculum in the superintendent's office, and you've had some conversations. You're learning about what's going on and what the process is. And now you want to organize some volunteers. And so, you know, that intent is to, you would organize volunteers to speak out of board meetings, mostly in an educational capacity. I have found that in this particular case, what you really want to do is educate not only all of the board members, but the public. And the best way to do that is through speeches at, at board meetings. That requires organization, it requires a lot of volunteers. So we have a document of how to organize volunteers, which kind of goes through the steps of how you might want to do it. There are links to sample instructions for when you speak at a, at a board meeting. It's a link to our talking points, that kind of thing. So all that is there. Then what you'll want to do is you'll want to prepare for your school board meeting. And your, this document here basically tells you kind of how school board meetings work. A lot of people aren't familiar with it. Almost, I haven't seen a school board in the state of California that doesn't have a meeting every two weeks with, you know, the exception of holidays and stuff. Most of them are now starting to go back to in-person. If that's the case, then you would need to get your volunteers to show up in person to, to speak during public comment. And all of that is really here in this. And so there are, again, some tips for creating talking points. We have an actual talking points document, that kind of thing. But all of that is here in this, in this particular document. Then we have a instructions. So you've got your volunteers, you created your talking points, you know exactly what you're gonna do. And now what you want to do is communicate that with your volunteers. And so we have this document that really is something that you can fill out and then you forward to your volunteers. It makes it super, super easy for them to know what to say, know when to say it, and then just do it in their time. You know, obviously you want to make sure that they thank people, that they introduce themselves, and that they stick to their time limit, and that's really key. So you have to, you have to know that ahead of time. And then the last thing would be our Talking Points Document. And this is super helpful for, as Alina said earlier, anyone. Whether you're running for school board, whether you are a parent who wants to talk about something to another parent, talk to your teachers, whatever it is, this is just a, a list of different talking points that we've come up with about the differences between the two types of ethnic studies, what some of the issues are, the victim oppressor lens, the militant role models, the indoctrination. And then here, this is kind of a, a big one, in my opinion. It's, these are the differences between a critical or liberated guiding principle and a constructive guiding principle. And these just happen to show just the FAIR curriculum and the LAUSD curriculum. But I think it's really powerful to be able to see the differences comparatively, to show them that constructive ethnic studies still addresses all of the things that an ethnic studies curriculum should address. It just does it in an empowering way. It, you know, it, that's the thing that we're, we're trying to get across. You don't have to tear down others in order to tell a story. You can tell a story, you can evaluate history, you can evaluate even current events. And you can do so though, in a very empowering way that is not done through an ideological lens. And that's what these talking points really, really talk about. So the other scenario would be if you, your child comes home or you get wind of some really concerning classroom material, right? And so you say, you know, my, I, my kid just came home with this and I, yeah, I'm really concerned about it. What do I do? My school district just implemented an ethnic studies curriculum and it, it's looking concerning because I've looked at how to tell if it's liberated, critical, and I see some of these keywords and I'm, I'm really concerned. What do I do? So, you know, again, we go back to the beginning. You go back to steps to getting started. You ask the questions, you, you, we meet with administrators, you show them. I think that the biggest thing that you can do to affect change is show specific examples of what the concerns are. It's part of the reason why just talking about CRT doesn't work. Because it is very easy for them to, for activists, and I don't mean school board members. I just mean whoever the activists are, whether they are on the school board or whether they're embedded in the administration or as teachers. But it's very easy for them to say, you're against CRT, you're a racist. And we don't teach CRT, but CRT is about teaching history and you're a racist because you don't want that. If you stay away from that and you can say, here is an example of something that was in my child's classroom that is completely inappropriate. I have a problem with this, how are we going to fix it? Again, when you, when you have created those relationships, it's a lot easier to go to them and say, hey, did you know that this was going on in XYZ school? That this was going on in XYZ school and Miss so-and-so's class? Um, you know, this is what, this is what happened and my kid came home and he was really upset. And you know, is this really appropriate for eighth graders or whomever? Um. All of that is really important. It's also really helpful when you have those specific examples to be able, that's how you get your volunteers. That's how you really organize people is when I was doing work, we had found out um that Santa Clara County and I, I. I did a presentation about this, so some of you might be familiar with it, but we had found out that Santa Clara County. Was sponsoring an ethnic studies initiative, which is a, which was a teacher training. And it was created by one of the original authors of the ethnic studies model curriculum. He is based in liberated ethnic studies and what he was teaching teachers and was trying to figure out with them how to get this into all classes and all grades. K through 12, art through English through history. Um, was, you know, think all of the critical liberated uh ideology, which is, you know. Uh, religion and capitalism is akin to genocide. That was on one of the slides. My point is that there were all of these things. He, what he said was that you had to have the right um politics in order to teach ethnic studies. Um, you needed to fly under the radar if your administrators weren't going to be supportive and all of the things that are concerned, that's what he was spewing. Um. That, having that information out there was really essential in awakening people to what was going on and getting them. Excited enough that they would give up a couple of hours of their time to show up at a school board meeting um and and talk, right? And and that's not always comfortable and a lot of people don't like to do it. So um, those kinds of things are are really helpful. So that's part of the reason why making those relationships is important. Um, preparing for school board meetings is important. Um, but we also have sample letter to the, to a board, a principal, superintendent, whatever. Um, for when you have a very specific example. And, you know, this is a really effective way to, when you got all those people, you've got something out there and you um. Have, you know, gotten the word out, you have all these people, you can create a Google form or or we can help you with that, actually. We've done it a couple of times. Um, and you send a letter. I was able to send a letter to Santa Clara County's uh Board of Trustees. Um, after three days, I got over 500 county resident signatures, um, which I was pretty excited about. Um, and i- it, it made a difference. I mean, granted, we were all labeled right wing crazy racist, but. You know, it, it did make a difference and it got the word out that there were a people out there who were not okay with this. Um, and eventually the program got shut down. So there are definite ways to um, to affect change. And sometimes having that classroom material is really important. Um. So that I would say is pretty much the overview of the toolkit. Um, we have tons of information on our website. If you go to about ethnic studies, you can read about it. Um, th- they're just, there are tons of, tons of ways to um. Get information about it. So I'm gonna stop screen sharing and then if there are questions, Alina and I can answer.
Thank you, Leah. I'll go to a couple here. I'll triage a couple of them. Um, there was a question about um legal leverage to stop the teaching of ethnic bigotry. Does that not exist? So I'm gonna share a screen for a moment. There's a slide that includes California ed codes.
Yep.
Um. So uh, this is, and these are all listed in the toolkit under that know your rights heading. Um, so you can see, for instance, section 220 says, no person shall be subject to discrimination on the basis of nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion. In any program or activity conducted by an educational institution that receives uh. Um, in interestingly enough, stop sharing this, um. Interestingly enough, uh, this same language is repeated. In the bill, the AB 101 bill. So it's actually, and that's something that there were organizations that fought hard for to repeat the language to emphasize. That there needs to be some sort of legal recourse and there should not be a bias or discrimination that is exercised. Um, so I'm not gonna say that there's no legal recourse. There are absolutely legal recourse. And we expect that people will be bringing legal action forward. Um, that's why there are organizations that are interested in taking this on. Um, what we're giving you are other, we're just focusing on other tools today that you can use. But I absolutely would not tell you that there is no legal recourse.
There are also um board and administrative codes that school districts pass. And and some of them also focus on, on this kind of stuff. Um, controversial issues is one of the keywords. So we have a document, actually, I might. I'm gonna share my screen super fast. Um, we have a document in our toolkit. Um, under know your rights called education codes. And that's this document right here. And so right at the very top is. If you were to go to your school district's administrative or board resolutions and do a search. I would search for some of these words and you would come up with some of these uh policies and uh and resolutions. And so these are just samples from a school district down in Southern California, but really most school districts have them. Um, and it would be super easy for you to do a search. Again. If you make those connections with the board members or you become a board member, then board members tend to know what's going on. They have easier access to them. Um, that is a super great way to use your relationship with a a new school board member.
Yeah, some of you, um, I'll just add that that in in terms of the legal stuff, uh, I just saw that there was a. Chat about a court case that's been initiated in San Diego through CEPR Californians for equal rights. That's one. There are also others around the country, including one in Nevada that was initiated by a mom of a biracial. Boy who was asked to assert his white dominance, I believe, in the classroom. And uh, he was white passing. Um, his father is black and so. That court, that court case is currently in the courts. So absolutely, people are gonna be taking this to the courts. Um, there's, I see a question, did you include the ed code on teaching communism? I guess we haven't, Leah. I know that there is a code against teaching communism. Uh, we can certainly add that one.
No, it's, there's one in there. I think it's um in the California ed code. So on our document, um. I'm looking. Oh, and you know what? I don't see it. Um.
We'll make a note to add that one.
Yeah, we will. There's definitely an edu, there are California ed code in particular that says something about communism.
Yep. Um, good catch. We'll add that one. Uh, I also saw a question on whether somewhere earlier, um, somebody was asking about the ESMC. And whether or not schools are adopting it. So just to be clear, the ESMC despite being one, oh, almost 1,000 pages long. Is just a model curriculum, believe it or not.
Not even a cur, I don't know why they call it a model curriculum. It's a, it's an outline. It's not a curriculum.
It is not a full curriculum. So schools are expected to take that and hire consultants. And this is how we end up having Hayward Unified School District spending $1,500 per hour. To hire liberated ethnic studies coalition consultants, a total of $40 million that they have allocated to. Uh, adopt the liberated, the critical curriculum. But anyway, the idea is that schools will take the model curriculum and they will adopt it. They don't have to use it. So keep in mind, this is a model curriculum is just a suggestion. They don't have to use it. Um, if they do, they end up adopting it for themselves. And one of the things that ACES is really trying to do is collect these positive curricula. That we can say, hey, here's an off-the-shelf curriculum that you can take and you don't need to go out spending $1,500 an hour. To develop curricula off of a model curriculum. So the answer to the question of whether the ESMC has already been adopted by other public boards is a little bit complicated. Because it's been customized and it's in the process of being customized by various boards. But the short answer is yes, they um. Boards, public um, school boards are adopting that approach. Um. Okay, how are we doing? Uh, let me see. Oh, I'll look at the next one.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, when I got done screen sharing, there were like 15 questions or things in the chat. So I don't know where you are and I don't want to jump in.
Yeah, a bunch of them, I think I answered online. Um, there's a question. Oh no, that's the one I just said. Uh, I think this is the, has the curriculum been okayed by any public school boards yet? Since the initial draft was amended. Okay, if I understand this correctly.
I think we covered, we just talked.
I think that's the one we just talked about. Judy, you can correct me if I got something wrong in that. I assume that's referring to the ESMC. That was amended and finalized and as you, uh, as we've been talking about, the ESMC went in two directions. So there's, you could do it in a constructive way or you could uh interpret it in a critical slash liberated way, but you're, you're not supposed to, but. Schools will do anyway.
So I see a comment here by Bonnie too, that if one doesn't like what's taught by your school, you can get outside resources to teach what's acceptable. I would think that that would be another avenue, A, for a school board member to advocate for and also for parents, right? I mean, one of the things that that parents and not just parents, community members, anyone in a community. Um, you elect the school board members, they spend your money. Therefore, if they're spending your money on DEI consultants that are teaching teachers that they have white privilege. Um, or are, you know, trying to teach them to bring. Critical theory into the classroom or liberated ethnic studies, you have the right as as citizens to organize. And then tell the board that that's not okay. And, you know, usually board members, superintendents are not quite so great about listening. Um, but board members tend to be because board members tend to get elected or not elected. So um. So yeah, I mean, I think that that's absolutely the case. If there's something that you don't like about what's being taught in your school. You have every right to to organize. Please use our toolkit and organize yourselves, go talk to people and and. Find a different way around it.
Hundred percent. Um, I have one um question that I got before that I just wanted to share with folks. And this was um more on the legal aspect and the question was, can't we just sue the districts? Um, the various districts and um. As we've said, that is an option, but there are two issues that we have to be aware of. One is in order to sue a school or a school district, you need to have a plaintiff. And we have found that parents are quite reluctant, especially parents of children whose kids are going to stay at the given school are quite reluctant. To sue that school or that district. So um, there is, so we're dealing with that on the one hand. You need to have a plaintiff if you're going to have a lawsuit. And then um, the other part is the gray area. And as we've been talking about, vid codes, I'm sure you can imagine that there's a lot of gray area. Whether or not something is displaying discrimination or bias. Or or if indeed you are promoting communism and so on. There is a gray area where one can argue yes or no. Um, so that's why it's not quite as simple as, well, why don't we just all go sue the school districts over this?
Um, I found three questions.
Excellent.
I can answer pretty quickly, I think. So uh, the first one is um, the, you know, is, is ethnic studies required only once? Um, in which of the four years are they gonna place it? So the intent is that ethnic studies will be offered at the high school level. Many schools are inserting it as a semester-long or even a year-long course as a freshman. Some schools are doing sophomore. Paso Robles is actually doing um junior, senior. I totally agree that freshman consumption is very different than senior level consumption. I have to tell you that I think the intent is to get it in as early as possible so that they can indoctrinate young students and move forward. So that is, I mean, that, there's a reason why they, you know, I think that's also the reason why the the ESMC is so. Outlineish and not curriculum-ish so that, you know, then all their buddies will get paid to do the training and the cre- curriculum creation. But, but yeah, so every school district is gonna be different. Uh, they just have to have it before they graduate by 2029. Um.
And I'll add, Leah, I'll add one more thing to that, which is that originally when the. Bill mandating the creation of the ESMC, this is AB 2016, was passed, the idea was that it would be one semester in high school. Uh, somewhere along the line, under the radar is, happens with a lot of these things where people aren't watching. It turned into the ethnic studies model curriculum for K through 12. So um, if you think that it's, it should be different for ninth grade or 12th grade, think about how different it should be for kindergarten versus.
Right.
Um, so again, some of you have probably heard the examples where we have um in Cupertino district, for example, where third graders were. Diagramming their identities and diagramming which part of them is oppressor and oppressed and so on. Um, so some of this is being applied in pretty ludicrous ways down to much, much lower grades. Um, I agree with Leah that in most cases it'll end up being ninth grade and some, with some exceptions. And from what we've seen so far with replacing, because it has to replace something, so don't. I think most of us probably won't go for the argument that we'll get from administrators that says, oh, it's not replacing anything. Um, in most cases, what is, it's replacing is world history, a semester of world history. And so a lot of school districts are shrinking down one and a half semesters, sorry, one and a half years, three semesters of world history. Down to one year of world history.
Um, so there's a, another question, will you need to be vaccinated to attend school board meetings? I, I do not believe there is a ma, a vaccine mandate in the state of California yet. Um, I, I have, you know. I have my own opinions about what Newsom will or will not do, but as, as of now, you do not need to be vaccinated. You just have to wear a mask indoors. You just have to follow the county, the county regulations. Um, and then there is a question about why, so my, to my comment about why school board members are the most offensive people we'll ever encounter. What created that? Um, so, look, I don't really know. My guess is that. So I got involved in this because I have two kids who are in high school. And um, it was raised to me that these activist teachers wanted to uh. Bring an ethnic studies course into our school district and part of that was based on the first draft. Which was incredibly anti-Semitic and being a Jew, I felt really offended by that. And I did not want my kids who are already dealing with anti-Semitic comments, um Holocaust jokes, all of that through middle school. I did not want that. Uh, to go forth in high school. So what happened was Mama Bear came out and I wasn't so nice. Um, so, you know, my guess is that, you know, people don't go to school board meetings or contact their school board members when they're happy. To say, great job. I'm so proud of you and I'm so happy I elected you. Usually they go to say, I have a problem and you're gonna fix it. You're gonna fix it now because this is my kid. So I would, I would venture to say that that's probably why they're defensive.
And I'll add that our hope is that when some of you get on these boards, that you will not be among those super defensive board members and that you will actually. One of the reasons that we would love for you to do this is that we need more and more, not only same voices, but ears that will listen and will not be defensive. Um, I see a question that says, did we define the ethnicities that are required to be included in the curriculum or did the state? Uh, yes, that is in the ethnic studies model curriculum that was defined by that group that originally wrote the initial draft. Um, the sequence was it went from the California Department of Education. It was finally approved by the State Board of Education. And so the idea of defining it, dividing it up this way and defining those groups um came from. The State Board of Education. Again, it's not that it's required to be taught this way, but it is highly recommended and I'll be surprised. Um, if you get a ton of schools that aren't teaching us. I'm su, I'm sure some will, to not divide it up this way, but I'll be surprised if most of them. Don't go that route. Uh, by the way, for those of you that are interested in taking a look at the ethnic studies model curriculum, if you go to our website and go to documents. You will see, when you scroll down, you will see the link to the almost 1,000 page document. That you can use for some nighttime reading. Um. Do we have, I think we got them all, right? Leah, did you see any others?
Uh. No, I think that's it.
Okay. Um, all right. So um, it was great to spend this time with you and I'm hoping that we'll give you. The gift of a few minutes um back and um, I just wanted to thank you. Give a big thank you again to Jan and Wendy for organizing this super. for organizing this super important conversation, and of course to Leah for lending her expertise to us today. Um, and thank you for your time and your energies. Um, I have talked to groups before about the idea that I really believe that what we're doing here is deciding how the next generation is going to interact with each other. And I do think that this is not going to be a quick battle. This is a long-term game. This is going to go for a while. Um, and so the victories, we're gonna be taking the victories as they come. Uh, and every little one is a big deal. So every board meeting, every conversation you have, every um parent, every teacher, every school board member that you convince and you show them the importance of not teaching bigotry in the classroom, and that you can teach how to build bridges, and that you can teach appreciation, understanding of other cultures and other ethnicities without alienating different groups and dividing um, every one of those counts. I have no doubt that we are going to win this eventually. And I thank you from, on behalf of ACES, for doing your part in helping us all win that battle. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Leah and Alina. And we just wanna encourage all of those people that might be thinking about running for school board, that we'll all be here, right? So if they have questions and they not sure, anybody out there thinking of running for school board's gotta be ten times better than a lot of people out there right now. So, if you don't think, well, I don't know if I can do it, it's one step at a time. You don't know it until you step into it. So, we just, you know, really, really encourage you to, to take that step, and we'll try, you know, walking beside you and helping in any way we can. And this, where we've recorded this session, and we'll have it on our website, and uh we'll let everybody know when it's up there. Is there anything else that you want us to send out to people? Uh.
I think that does it.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great evening.
Alina, thank you, Leah. We'll talk to you soon.
Bye.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.